All right, we're going to start, open up the, or start the meeting for the planning board in the city of Leinster for August 3rd, 2020. And Elizabeth, do you mind reading the governor's executive order at the beginning, please?
Okay, I'm ready. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, chapter 30A, section 18, and the governor's March 15th, 2020 order imposing strict limitation on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the City of Leinster Planning Board will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible.
Okay, excellent. Do we have enough members to open the 6:30 public hearing?
I believe we do. Do you want to do a quick roll call?
Oh, of course. Yes, let's do that.
John SZA.
Yeah.
Carol Vittorioso.
Yeah.
Sal Chaconi.
Yeah.
Tom Carrigan. Excuse. Paul Weiser.
Here.
Patrick Perla.
Here.
Fred Frederick.
Here.
Hey, everyone but Tom.
Okay, we're going to open up the public hearing which has been continued for definitive subdivision approval for Mary Avenue Extension, which is 1157 rear Main Street. So if anyone's here to present that.
We have a letter, Carol.
Okay.
So, do you want me to read it? It's on the screen, and I can read it.
If you could read it, only because I was running late, I'm in the car, and I'll be, but I'm gonna be home in like two seconds.
On behalf of our client, James Exares, we request a continuance of the public hearing for the Mary Avenue Extension subdivision. We request the public hearing to be continued to the scheduled September Planning Board meeting of September 21st, 2020. We would also request for an additional extension of the required planning action time from this hearing to a date of December 22nd, 2020.
Okay, so they're looking for that.
Signed Anthony.
They're looking for an extension. Do I have a motion to accept?
I do. Fred, here.
This is Paul, second.
Motion made by Fred, second by Paul. All those in favor, roll call, please.
What, what, what time on September 21st?
I assume it's the first thing. We have nothing else.
6:30.
Okay, 6:30. Thank you.
John SZA.
Yes.
Carol Vittorioso.
Yeah.
Sal Chaconi.
Yes.
Tom Carrigan, excuse. Paul Weiser.
Yes.
Patrick Perla.
Yes.
Fred Frederick.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. I have the 6:35 continued public hearing for special permit approval for 17 Gordon Street for a ground-mounted solar energy system, special permit number four in 2020. Do I have an applicant to present this plan? Or continue the presentation of this?
I believe we do.
Yeah, I'm Leah Tierney from Nine Hundred Energy.
Can you state your name again one more time for the record, please?
Yep, Leah Tierney.
So Leah, it's up to you to give us an update and let us know what you've provided for the records. I've got everything on my screen here. I can pull it up. Or I can make you, or if you'd like, I can make you the, I can give you control of my screen and you can go through the pages as you would like. You tell me.
Sorry, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Elizabeth, this is Stephanie. I don't know if you want to.
Hello?
Let the board, let the board know what you had sent out, what was provided, and how the.
Yeah, the board would like to know. Usually, they go to the applicant first. But Carol, what's the board's pleasure? Do you want me to give you a brief synopsis of where staff stands before the applicant presents? Because you had asked me to work with them, with the applicant between the last meeting and this meeting to get every other requested material that the board needed.
Hi, sorry, can you hear me now?
Okay, I think Carol, Carol's parking. Um, so.
Yes, I'm, I'm in a better spot now. I would prefer, I would like to get an update, if that's okay.
Okay, so I murdered notice of continuance, which I pulled up here to the applicant, and I encouraged the applicant to to submit a site plan application. And I also encouraged them to go over the points of my memo and respond to each, each one, including the special permit sections that are relevant to this application, which is Article 1, Section 22-13. The applicant did, at the very beginning, reply back immediately. I think I wrote my memo on July 15th, and I, I may have heard back that very day from the applicant with responses to compliance to chapter 22, section 22-104, Solar Ordinance. And if you'll note in your packet, there's a letter, there's that letter from the applicant, and there are a number of waivers that are requested. Not all of them, there are some sections that the applicant stated that they are meeting. And it's, it's pretty clear there which ones are intended to be met and which ones are, they're requesting waivers from. But then I, I reached back out to the applicant to let them know that we did need to require a site plan, and we did require a response for a special permit application for Article 1, Section 22-13. And the applicant was compliant. We unfortunately didn't get the site plan application until after the deadline for the agenda was made, so it's not on the agenda. So we do have it in hand now, so with the chair's pleasure, we could possibly discuss scheduling that site plan. But it wasn't advertised as such yet, because we didn't get it in time. But as far as the special permit, because there's two pieces, there's the special permit piece. The applicant did respond with a letter addressing all sections of Article 1, Sections 22-13. So we, we've got bits of information in different stages, and I believe we have everything we need now. But as a matter of procedure, the board might want to consider what they might want to consider scheduling the site plan as is required. Up to the chair. From the board. So we didn't get the site plan application until after the agenda was already posted.
Okay, we can't.
And I asked for it on the 15th of July. With my first paragraph of continuance.
Okay.
So technically, you could issue the special permit if you go through the criteria and agree that everything is, meets the board's requirements. But the site plan hasn't been scheduled yet.
Okay, when we go through the, the site plan, or go through the special permit, but we'll still want to do the site plan, so that way we'll be able to go through each one of the items, and we'll either accept or reject each one of the waivers that they're requesting. Or some of them that they've, they've met the requirements.
Can I ask for clarification? This is Paul here. I, I think what Elizabeth is trying to tell us is that we can't take this up tonight, because we don't have all of the information. Is that correct?
The special permit, you can take up tonight. The site plan hasn't been advertised. So nothing to do with site plan can be taken up, but everything to do with special permit is possible to take up.
Is there a reason to do one without doing the other? It's not gonna allow the applicant to move forward any faster if we do it tonight than if we do them together next time. And that seems to make more sense to me, since we're gonna repeat a lot of the stuff we do tonight next time. Unless I'm missing something, is there some advantage to doing a piece of it tonight, and then going back and doing it again next meeting?
Paul, the only advantage that we, if we went through it, if there's an issue that comes up on the special permit part, they still have time to react to it and get it done when we do the site plan. If we wait until we do the site plan, and the issue comes up at that point, then we can continue it again. So.
If the waivers don't pass, then, then they might not have a site plan to submit.
Okay, and let's do it.
Okay.
Okay, that's the later response. Let me get the. It's just gonna take me a minute to pull these up.
Okay.
And this is Stephanie. For the record, Sal has watched the meeting. Is that correct, Sal?
That's correct. I signed the affidavit today.
Great, so he can participate.
I have a que, oh, you can hear me then, good. I was wondering if people could hear me. That, that answers the question, Steph. I would think that a lot of the waivers could be dependent on the project.
Okay, I pulled up the letter. It wasn't dated, but we received it shortly after July 15th.
Right.
So that, do, do, and I guess Leah is, would typically go through these item by item, and, and so she's representing the applicant, and she might want to go over my comment versus the response. Leah, are you available to do that?
I thought we had a response on all of these.
We do. I thought John asked you wanted to go over each one.
Yes.
You said that.
I'm sorry, what is it you need me to do?
Okay, Leah, there's a letter that you provided, or that your organization provided. It's not dated, but it says, "Reply to the July 15th Notice of Continuance." So what you did was, the first thing, the first thing you did was talk about compliance with chapter 22, section 22-104 from the Solar Ordinance. Would it be helpful if I read my comment, and then you read the response? Would that help guide you a little bit?
Uh, yes, please.
Okay, so the first comment I made was effective, or, let's see. "Per Section 22-104.4.c.i., all plans and maps must be prepared, stamped, and signed by a professional engineer licensed to practice in Massachusetts. Original stand signatures are required for the filed copy."
We did submit stamped documentation for this. And it will be used onsite by the homeowner. It won't be used commercially. It's a residential system.
And it's included in the packet, right? We put it in the packet. All right, now, the next one is, "Per Section 22-104.4.c.i.i.1.a., property lines and physical dimensions of the site parcel and adjacent parcels within 300 feet of the site parcel shall be shown on the plan."
We provided this in the packet as well.
I believe you asked for a waiver of that? If you see number three, it says a waiver is requested, as this request is met.
Yes, I apologize, I was looking at number two.
Did you want to read?
On a small, small project like this, this would be no problem to leave it. We want to take each one of these individually and vote on it. Hello?
We're not gonna be able to vote till we go into the regular meeting, though, right?
No, okay, we're just going through it, okay. Just discuss it. Yeah, we've done this before on small projects.
Okay, are we moving on to number four?
Yep.
"Per Section 22-104.4.c.i.i.1.a., include the outline of all existing buildings, including the purpose on-site parcel and all adjacent parcels within 100 feet of the site parcel, including distances to each building shown." Leah, number four?
Right.
I missed part of that, my phone cut out, but I know we did request a waiver, given the scope of the project and the adjacent properties.
Yep.
I agree.
That's what's in the memo. All right, number five, "Per Section 22-104.4.c.i.i.1.a., show any existing overhead utility lines on the plan."
We did provide documentation on this.
No waiver required.
Mm-hmm. All right, number six, "Per Section 22-104-4.c.i.i.1.f., display all proposed changes to the landscape of the site, grading, vegetation, clearing, and planting, exterior lighting, screening, vegetation, or structures."
This has been satisfied.
Okay, number seven, "Per Section 22-104.4.e., provide an operation and maintenance plan."
We did provide this as well.
Okay, number eight, "Demonstrate adherence to Section 22-104.4.c.i.i.5 regarding liability insurance."
We provided a copy of the liability insurance.
Excellent. Number nine, "Demonstrate adherence to Section 22-104.4.c.i.i.6 regarding ambient noise levels."
We did provide supporting documents for this, but the noise level is comparable to rainfall.
Okay.
Number 10, "Per Section 22-104.4.i.i., unauthorized access fencing must be of solid wood with a height of eight feet. Pressure-treated posts must be used. A hardware cloth is proposed as an alternative, alternative screening."
We are asking for a waiver on this. The homeowner does have a six-foot fence around their property, and given that it's a residential property, we're asking for the eight-foot requirement to be laid.
Okay. "Demonstrate that the appropriate access driveway width of 20 feet minimum has been provided."
It's not necessary.
Yeah, we're asking. Thank you.
Add a note to the plan stating that construction shall be limited to the hours between 7:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m.
This has been satisfied.
Okay, number 13 of 18, "The applicant must demonstrate adherence to safety environmental standing standards, including providing emergency services, a key to the gated entrance, provide 20-hour access to the facility." The applicant, yeah, number 13.
We do ask for a waiver on the 20-hour access, as it is a private, a private residence, but all of our standards and installations are up to code and OSHA standard.
Number 14, "The applicant shall demonstrate adherence to Section 22-104.4.i.i. regarding unauthorized access. Fencing must be wood with a height of eight feet."
The waiver on this?
Yes.
Waiver, okay. Number 15, "Financial assurance for the eventual decommissioning of the all-site solar system must be provided by the applicant per 22-104.4.k.i.i."
We are asking for a waiver on this, is similar to an appliance that will live on the property in perpetuity, and there is no intent to decommission the system.
Well, the system has a life of 20 to 25 years. What happens after that? When it becomes, it becomes inefficient? Is there a plan to replace it with another one, or is it to take it out?
I, it can be recycled and replaced.
What's that?
The systems can be recycled and they can be replaced.
Okay, do we have documentation to that effect? That's, that's what we're asking for.
Okay, I don't have any documentation on that currently, but I can get it.
Okay, good.
"Per Section 22-104.6.b.i., the board shall determine the mean natural grade along the subject property's front yard."
Uh, not necessary.
Okay, 17, "The ground-mounted system shall be screened from view by adjacent properties."
Reading the documentation that I have, looks like you're at about eight feet?
Six. They're proposing a six-foot screen.
Right, they got a six-foot fence, but the unit is eight feet. Is that correct?
Just a moment, I have to look that up.
Leah, I'll step in here. So my name's Rick, I'm, I'm a colleague of Leah's. The system can be set at a six-foot height. It is traditionally at around eight foot for maximizing sun in this location, but it is adjustable, so we could set it at six foot if the board requests it.
No, that, I want it to be efficient, okay? Two feet above the fence, I don't think is that issue, is. So where you have the fence, I personally, I'm not talking for the board, I don't think I have a problem with it, okay? But I want to see the thing efficient.
Understood, appreciate that.
Number 18, the final comment was, "Prior to any construction or development, a building permit is required."
We would not start construction. Sorry, go ahead.
We have, we have every intent to get the building and electrical permit satisfied prior to starting construction.
And then, as far as the special permit, there, there's another letter when I ask for additional information. That's dated July 29th, that talks about meeting all the conditions of the special permit.
Okay.
I just pulled it up.
That's the one I had seen before, okay.
Yep, we have that.
Okay. Discussion on board members. On these different conditions. Anybody have any issues that?
Well, John, um, myself, I would just like to, to see where it's going. I would like to go to site on this, just to see where it's going, because I, you know, I'm still not convinced that, you know, cutting a fence by two feet, you know, I just want to see where, where, where it makes sense to go from eight to six feet, or if it makes sense.
Okay.
Fencing. So I'd like to see site.
You'd like to see a site walk, okay. Any other discussion on that, members?
I agree with, this is Fred, I agree with a site walk, and then we can get a better idea of what's going on. And we, and we'll have all, all the documentation and plans that we need at that time, too. I mean, next, next meeting, we should be able to go right through it.
Okay, that, that would have to be done, and that's good, because we've already got the drawings for the site plan.
Yep.
So we can do both at that time.
Right. Makes sense.
Any other issues on the special permit?
Nope.
None here.
Okay.
So let's schedule a site walk, it's ASAP.
Do you want one this week? Or do you want to do it next week, or when, when would you like to do it?
It's not gonna be this week for me.
Yeah, when's the next meeting? Elizabeth.
It's, we could have a meeting, I, I think when we talked about the summer schedule, we discussed not having a meeting on the 17th of August.
Right, it'll be September 21st is the next one.
And then it's, we've got a holiday?
Yep, that is correct.
We've got the holiday on the.
On Labor Day.
It's September 21st is the next one.
Well, if we get the Labor Day holiday, why don't we schedule something for the week of, after Labor Day, during that week?
Yeah, because that's gonna be a long time.
The 14th?
Not for the site walk, let's do the site walk.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Okay, sorry. It can't be this week for me.
Okay, how about next week?
Next week would be okay, Tuesday on.
Same.
Tuesday is okay in the morning.
Tuesday morning? Does that work for everybody?
I, I will make sure that I go by on my own. I'll wait till after the site walk, so somebody can let me know.
I could do later afternoon, if that's better for you, Pat, doesn't matter.
I'm open.
I'm literally starting a new position on Monday, so I, I really am not certain what my schedule looks like exactly.
Yeah, if you can't join the site, just go when you can, Pat.
Yeah, that's what I'll do.
I could do Friday of this week, if that's better for you.
I am available.
Next week is good.
Next week, okay.
I can't do the 11th in the morning, but I'll stop by after.
How about the afternoon on the 11th?
Or the 12th?
Yeah, I could do that, or the 12th.
The afternoon on the 11th or the 12th, I don't care.
Okay, I'm hearing from everybody except for Pat, that the 11th.
Well, if it's around five o'clock, I mean, then it's doable.
Do a late afternoon?
Yeah, I'd say, or 30 and 5. Five o'clock, maybe?
Yeah, this shouldn't be, I mean, this is an easy one. It should only take us about 20 minutes.
Yeah, five o'clock, it's fine.
Five o'clock on Tuesday the 11th.
Perfect.
Someone's gonna send out a, a meeting invite, Stephanie or Elizabeth?
Is it, is that good for the applicant?
Yeah, good question, Carol. Good question.
And just to confirm, I'm sorry, and just to confirm, this is not open to the public, correct?
Yes, it is.
Well, it has to be.
So it's open to the public to spew their site, okay.
You don't have to advertise it, but we can put it on the web.
All right, will do.
And yes, someone will send out a meeting invitation for them?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay. Do we have anything else on this special permit? Okay, motion would be to continue to September, what did we say, 14th? We'd like to do it the week after Labor Day.
It's the 21st.
So there's the one.
We're not gonna meet two weeks in a row, that.
Yeah, so.
Are we going to just have a special meeting for this project, which is fine by me?
What else do you have scheduled? Do we have any other stuff for September? Have we scheduled stuff already, or what?
No, we have not. We have, we scheduled the Mary Avenue Extension for 6:30.
Oh, that continues to December.
Yes, we're talking about September.
Nothing.
Nothing, see, okay, so we could have it on the 14th. I mean, I just want to see these people, we, I don't want to drag it out, I just want to get it done.
I agree.
So. Can we, can we make a comment, or?
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, no, we'd appreciate it if it didn't get dragged out. A couple of concerns that I have is, I don't want to get too close to winter, plus the fact that we're supposed to get a, a tax credit on this, and if it goes much longer, we're not, we're not, we're gonna miss out on, on that tax credit, because it ends at the end of the year, and they're not gonna be able to install us in the wintertime.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, no, I'd like to get it done. The biggest problem we're having is we don't have, we've got to write a, a zoning for solar-mounted for homes. So we're working off the one industrial and trying to adapt it. So I'm trying to be adaptive and get it done. So I'd like to do the meeting on, we can't do a Labor Day week, so let's do it the week following Labor Day.
If I may, if we're going to just have a meeting and possibly. If I may, if we're going to just have a meeting and possibly address this issue, kind of like a special meeting, then let's have it before, at the end of this month.
Yes.
And that way, we can really move it along and not have meeting, uh, two weeks in a row. I, I agree, as long as it's not the seventeenth of August, if we could do it on the twenty-fourth, that, that works for me.
Yeah, it can be the only thing on the agenda, just a special, uh, get this over with. So, whenever everybody can make it, it doesn't have to be a Monday either.
Well, we've got August twenty-first, uh, twenty-fourth, and August thirty-first, we've got.
Uh, do the twenty-fourth.
Yeah.
Okay, August twenty-fourth?
Make a motion to have it on.
Wait, does that give you enough time for your tax credit if we do it on August twenty-fourth? Will you have enough time?
Yeah, you get until the end of the year.
Yeah, I'm worried about it, because I guess my understanding is, my understanding is that not only does the, uh, it has to be installed, but I believe it has to be up and running, which, uh, is the final approval, I guess, is by National Grid, and my understanding is that that can take a little time as well, so I'm a little worried about, you know, already running the time that it's taking.
You just, it's the construction, the approval, yeah.
Keeping in mind, keeping in mind, I think there's a third twenty-day appeal period, too.
Right, right.
Again, don't, don't we have to, we, we, we can't even discuss the, the site plan, cause we don't have it yet, so we're really getting ahead of things.
Yeah.
Cause the, the stuff wasn't in time to do tonight, there's nothing we can do about that.
That's, that's right, Paul, so I, I'd say we, I mean, I think, I think we're doing our best, we'll, I mean, you can do it the seventeenth, but I'm not here, and then, if this is a special permit, you need five, so.
I don't know, I'm not positive about that either.
About what, Paul? About being.
I'm not positive I can make the seventeenth either.
So let's do the twenty-fourth.
No, that's time with me.
Schedule it for August twenty-fourth.
Six-thirty.
Sounds good.
So are we scheduling the site plan and the special permit?
Is that enough time?
Well, if they, if they want it approved, so they can get their tax credit and everything up and running, they're gonna have to, yes.
Is that enough time for advertising?
Uh, we don't need, we already advertised for the, for the special permit, if the site plan doesn't, uh, we, we have enough time to put it on the agenda. Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, okay, good. So we settle on the twenty-fourth?
Yep.
Six.
Yeah.
Good for me. Okay, good.
At what time?
That's six-thirty first, for the site plan, and six-thirty-five for the special permit.
So work for you, Dave.
Uh, six-thirty?
Yes, that's fine. With the sidewalk, and we'll, we'll, we'll reach out.
Okay.
Five o'clock on Tuesday the eleventh.
First of the motion to continue the special permit.
Well, first we have to close the hearing.
Oh, yeah, well, no.
No, we're not closing it.
Oh, no, continue the hearing, did we already continue it?
No, no.
We have to continue the hearing, we have to do that during the, uh, meeting, don't we?
No, you do it now.
All right.
Continue to, the hearing, August twenty-fourth at, at six-thirty.
So moved. Second.
Second, yeah.
Motion made in second, any further discussion? Hearing on a call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
You have to.
Aye, aye.
Wrong call.
Wrong call.
Wrong call.
John Souza.
Yay.
Caravita Triaso.
Yes.
Sal Chaconi.
Yes.
Tom Carrigan. Excuse. Paul Weiser.
Yes.
Patrick Prowl.
Yes.
Fred Frederick.
Yes.
Uh, motion carries. Um. In our regular meeting, uh, we'll have to bring up under directors, uh, report the, uh, special, the site plan.
Yep.
Or under communications. Okay, we'll handle that there. Understood?
Got it.
Okay. Um. Thank you, folks.
Thank you.
Okay, I have a public hearing.
Thank you much.
For a special permit approval for use under two thirteen Nashville Street, special permit, number five, and two twenty-twenty. Um. Understand there's an issue with the conservation.
Yeah, so if we want to read that letter into the record?
Yes, please.
Okay, let me pull it up. Okay, there's a letter dated July twenty-eighth, it's in the form of an email from Angela Chabuski, the conservation agent, in regards to two thirteen Nashville Street. Sure, it's, hello, Elizabeth, I'm working on this, and I know we discussed it last week, what I found in my, the files in my office. I wanted to send an email as well to inform everyone involved. They have a conservation application in my office, they mis, misrepresented some information on that application. Number one, they are not the owners and did not get approval from the owner, they have not submitted this information to my office, either of which I did request. They misrepresented Curtis Broad-Markle as the owner on the attached sheet. Number two, they have not paid for the permit or sent the permit fee to the state, they attached a photocopy of the check to the permit. I advise them to file with a digital portal with D E P, and D E P has not received anything. Number three, there's an open order of conditions on the property, the state will not allow a permit to be issued on a property that has an open order of conditions. This order is from nineteen ninety-eight for the six thousand three hundred and thirty square foot factory addition and repaving of areas. Due to the size of the addition and location they had to install stormwater system part regulations, they were exempt from the three standards, five, six, and seven, but were still required to meet the rest of the standards. The commission cannot issue a certificate of compliance until this is done, and they cannot issue a permit until they close out the other permit. After, after brainstorming with the D E P and the chair on how to best handle the issue while complying with the regulations here, is how it will be handled. I'm issuing an enforcement order, ordering them to finish the proposed work to bring the site into compliance. Then once that is completed, they can file for the C O C. After the C O C is issued and recorded, then they may proceed with the N O I filing. If they have already sent a check and permit to the state for the application, they will hold on to it until they have completed the enforcement, instead of making them start over. For the commission, they have, they will have to pay their fees, legal advertisement and N O I fee, as they misrepresented, misrepresented themselves on the checklist. I will hold on to the permit, and once everything is done, the commission will restart the permit, the applicant will have to re-notify a butters and redo the legal advertisement. At this time, due to this new information, I have to revoke my prior approval. The way this enforcement works, it will go to the contractor for order of conditions and the owner. Curtis Tree is not in the property at this time, so it will go to two thirteen Nashville Street Realty Trust, and the contractor on the permit, D R Poland Construction. I'm notifying the applicant as well, thank you, Angela Chabuski.
Okay. Uh. That seems pretty, uh, pretty straightforward, as far as I'm, I'm concerned.
Actually, great.
Looks like we've got some issues there.
Yep.
We've opened the hearing, uh, have they got some, uh, do I have representative there that would like to speak?
Yeah, Brian Marchetti from McCarty Engineering's here.
Yes, Brian.
So, um, that all boils down to the, there's a small detention basin that was installed, so the work was done, it's behind the building. Uh, it's been overgrown in the last, you know, ten, fifteen years, whatever, since it's been installed, so, excuse me, Curtis has already gone and cleared it out. So, we've already resubmitted, um, the whole application is complete, it's been submitted to Comic-Con. As Angela said, she's holding on to the application until we file for the certificate of compliance. So Curtis is gonna go in, just clean it out, reshape the pond a little bit. Um, and that's all the work that has to be done. Um, so that's all being done as we speak. Um, so, once it's completed, I'll file the C O C paperwork, it's just a letter in one form, there's no fee or application fee for it. They'll take it up at the next meeting, and then, um, as she said, the application has been submitted, to conservation, they have the checks, we submitted everything to D E P, D E P is just severely behind, so they haven't logged the project yet, everything's been there, the checks are cashed, uh, but it's not logged in their system, so we're gonna go through the, the, you know, the motion of what Angela said, we'll file the C O C. We'll, we'll go to the next hearing with it. Um. They'll do their inspection, hopefully they'll approve the certificate of compliance, and then we'll be able to move forward with the application for the, uh, notice of intent.
Please pause, we'll probably misinformation on the document, because we'll make sure it doesn't happen on our documents.
Another, the misinformation was, you know, all it was, was in the line that says owner, you know, owner's representative, we put Curtis Broad-Markle, who was the applicant, but not the property owner yet, he signed the purchase and sales. We have a letter and an email from Dave Doucette, the owner of the property, stating that, you know, he gives authority to Curtis to be on the application, so, um, it's, you know, it, it's, if, if whatever the issue is, it's cleared up, it's, it's being changed, or it's been changed. Uh, it's just changing one guy's name to another, so the, the application will be, is completed and filled out according to how Angela wanted it. And that's that, so, in our opinion, this hearing for the, uh, special permit tonight, you know, there's no reason it can't go on, and I think one of your typical conditions is, if conservation approval is required, the condition is that it be satisfied. So, I don't, I don't see how a conservation, um, you know, Angela's comments would hold up this planning board from voting on a special permit for this. I believe that's typical of, of, um, these types of approvals between different departments, cause they're not always filed in tandem, sometimes we file with the planning board first, and then after we get approval, we'll move forward with conservation. Uh, and this is pretty much exactly the case, we know we can't do work on the property until we have both permits in hand, but this is just one of the permits that we do need.
Okay. And this is a. We can do that as a condition.
Yeah, and so, this is a, a very, very straightforward project. Um, we're, we're moving an applicant, or a, an applicant from one building in town to another. And it's pretty much the same use or allowed use through, uh, you know, uh, an approval from the planning board.
Okay.
And there's very, very minimal work occurring on the property.
Is there one, are they? Are they cleaning up that place any?
Yeah, so, um, if I can, I'll just start my presentation, I don't know if you have to do anything for the record. So Curtis Broad-Markle currently operates, Curtis Tree Services out of, um, one fifty-eight Crawford Street. Uh. Process Cooling was, uh, recently housed at two thirteen Nashville Street, and they'd been there for twenty-plus years. Um, Process Cooling has moved over to Research Drive now, and the property became available for sale, so Curtis bought it, and he's hoping to just move, expand his operations, uh, he's gonna maintain one fifty-eight Crawford Street. That's where he'll continue to do log storage and wood chip storage, and then he's gonna move his cranes over to, uh, two thirteen Nashville Street, Process Cooling's old building. So, the site as it stands right now, um, you know, it's paved, it's an industrial building, it's in the MU one district. Um, what Curtis is proposing to do is add security, so he's gonna envelop the, the site in frontage with a fence. Uh, there'll be a sliding gate. We're gonna maintain all the parking, there's twenty-eight parking spaces right now, they're striped on the property. Uh, we'll maintain those same spaces. And the only other modifications to the property, uh, the two loading dock doors in the backside of the building, so on the west side of the building, right now, they're currently, uh, loading dock, so they're depressed grade, they're four-foot to finish grade from the door. Um, we're gonna basically put in a retaining wall and ramp up to those doors, so that Curtis, and enlarge the two garage doors, so that Curtis can park his two cranes inside the building. Uh, and that's where they'll be housed, and that's where he'll do maintenance on, on the trucks. Um, so.
And that's it, Brian, for changes on the property?
Excuse me?
I mean, that pad exists now, right? You just changed it.
It's all, yes, it does, it's all paved, so there's actually, there's actually a reduction in eight hundred square feet of impervious. Yeah. So we're reducing the amount of pavement on the property. Uh, and that's, and that's it, it's currently paved all the way to the back, we're just putting in a retaining wall, we're ramping up to the building, he's gonna replace the two doors with high bay doors, so he can get his cranes inside the building. And that's, and that's it, all the existing pavement's gonna remain. Um, there's another small retaining wall, we're gonna put, uh, if you look in the, the south face, mid-side of the building, for the same reason, uh, to level out loading bay doors, and, uh, and that's it. So Curtis currently operates himself, and he's got maybe seasonally two to five employees. So at, you know, his busiest peak, there's gonna be maybe five employees that work for him. And again, he's operating out of both properties at one fifty-eight Crawford Street and two thirteen Nashville Street, so, um, you know, certainly this ample parking with twenty-eight spaces on this lot.
Driver update has detected out of state drivers, that they need to return.
And, uh.
Download the latest.
Out of state drivers aren't allowed in, you know?
Yeah.
Um, so, I mean, yeah, there might have changes, as I, as I see them.
Yeah.
I'm looking at it on the floor, that's what I'm doing when you see me going like.
Yeah, no problem. I got little ones printed out in front of me. So that's it, so we, we submitted, we, we mail a billing department, they submitted their own determination letter that, uh, we're in the MU one district, so, uh, Peter and I classified this as a contractor condo or contractor garage, so it's allowed by special permit through the planning board. Uh, so we have to file the special permit application with you guys. Uh, we didn't receive any comments from town departments. Um. Well, you just, I guess you just heard Angela revoke her positive, uh, comments, but, you know, we are going through that process as we speak, and that, obviously, all permits will have to be in hand, which should easily be covered as a condition of your approval. Um. Elizabeth Wood did, uh, request back in the middle of July that we provide written responses to Article One, Section twenty-two thirteen, and that was the only comment, so we provided that the following day on the sixteenth of July, or July fifteenth. Um. So, I believe those are the only, the only things really left to review with, with, uh, this board, if you'd like to go through them one by one.
No, we don't have to.
So, just, just, I guess just to briefly brush upon the synopsis of this is, all of the abuttes from that building, they're all industrial uses, it's the same, you know, they're not in a residential neighborhood, they're all industrial uses. Um, you know, across the streets, a wire rack manufacturer, there's a construction supply yard on one side, and then there's a ring manufacturer on the other side, so, um, they're not in a floodplain, we're not doing anything really to the property that's gonna, uh, add to its detriment, if anything, we're, uh, improving the site, we're moving eight hundred square feet of pavement, so, you know, that also lends to any, any issues that we're gonna have to deal with with conservation, because of the drains that, uh, was overgrown. We're actually reducing the impervious now, which is just gonna make it a better condition for the site.
Okay.
So.
Good.
Sounds good to me.
And again, there's no plan to do outside, you know, tree storage and stuff on this property, that's gonna stay over on, uh, the, uh,
Crawford.
Crawford Street property.
Okay. Do I have any questions or comments, uh, anyone else? Any board members have any questions?
No.
I, this is definitely. Okay, good. Um, I think.
Five o'clock, whoop, um.
What we can do with this is we can follow this, uh, we can close the hearing on this, and then when we get into our discussion, uh, we'll, we'll, we'll make it a condition of the, uh, the Conservation Commission, um, being taken care of.
Paul, should we open it up to the public in case anyone's listening in?
Yeah, I thought, okay, I'll, I said anyone, but I'll say specifically of.
Okay.
Is there anyone, any public listening in that was just speaking? I'll ask one more time, do I have anyone in the public, or anyone listening that would like to make a comment? Okay. Someone like to make a motion? Someone like to make a motion?
Motion to close the hearing.
Second.
I have a motion made and seconded to close the hearing. Uh, roll call.
John Siza.
Yay.
Carol Vittoriasso.
Yes.
Saatchikunin.
Yes.
Tom Kerrigan, excuse, Paul Weiser.
Yes.
Patrick Perla.
Yes.
Fred Frederick.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Okay, regular amendment meeting, call to auto.
John Siza.
Yes.
Carol Vittoriasso.
Yeah.
Saatchikunin.
Yeah.
Thomas Kerrigan. Excuse, Paul Weiser.
Here.
Patrick Perla.
Here.
Fred Fredericks.
Here.
Okay, minutes. Uh, June 1st.
Make a motion and accept them.
There you go, Fred. Second.
Okay, I have a motion made and seconded, uh, to accept the minutes. Do I have any additions, deletions or corrections?
Nope.
You're none, I'll call for the roll call.
John Siza.
Yay.
Carol Vittoriasso.
Yes.
Saatchikunin.
Abstain.
Tom Kerrigan, excuse, Paul Weiser.
Yes.
Patrick Perla.
Yes.
Fred Fredericks.
Yes.
Okay, plan submitted. Three point one A and R approval for one seven zero Arlington Street assesses Matt Posel, one seven nine lot nine.
Just a second. Time to get zoom out a little bit.
Okay. Do we have a representative?
Yes, you do. Alex from Zoxavairs.
Okay.
And, uh, Alex, just so you know, Josh Olson here, the applicant also here.
Okay, good. I live in the street, uh, as residential A.
Square footage is good. Where's the frontages?
Sorry, I'm pulling up my staff review.
Alright, that's alright.
Everything met the dimensions.
Yeah.
And the frontages.
Agridge setbacks.
And I had one comment that they add the setbacks in.
That's a good comment, Elizabeth.
And they did, um, it's not shown on this plan, but they provided a follow-up plan with the setbacks provided.
The setbacks are adequate?
Yes.
On the current, on the garage?
Garage is what, five feet from the lot line? This non-living space? Residence.
The closest it is, the small garage is seven feet, seven inches change.
We have the dimensions on the new submission, so we're good there. A motion to endorse.
I have a motion to endorse, so I have a second.
I'll second it.
Have a second, is that Paul?
Yep.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Nope.
Here and on, I'll call for the roll call.
John Siza.
Yay.
Carol Vittoriasso.
Yes.
Saatchikunin.
Yes.
Thomas Kerrigan, excuse, Paul Weiser.
Yes.
Patrick Perla.
Yes.
Fred Fredericks.
Yes.
Okay. Motion carries. Four point zero. Old business. The Federal Subdivision approved Mary Avenue, 1157 Main Street. Uh, this has been continued? Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Special permit for four point two. Special permit approval for 17 Gordon Street for ground mounted, this has been continued. Okay, to August.
Twenty fourth.
Twenty fourth at six thirty. Okay, any further discussion on this at this time?
Did, did we vote on a site plan? Do we usually do that? I can't remember. I mean, not a site plan, a, um, site visit, sitewalk?
Yes, you agreed to do it on, on August 11th.
Okay, and we did vote on that? Okay.
I, um, no, we, we discussed it, uh, at this time we would vote on it.
I'll make a, I'll make a motion to, for the site visit on that date and time.
Second it.
I have a motion made and seconded for a sitewalk for 17 Gordon Street at, uh,
Five o'clock.
Yeah, what was the date?
August 11th.
August 11th, okay. August 11th.
Roll call.
Roll call.
John Siza.
Yay.
Carol Vittoriasso.
Yes.
Saatchikunin.
Yes.
Tom Kerrigan, excuse, Paul Weiser.
Yes.
Patrick Perla.
Yes.
Fred Fredericks.
Yes.
I think we have the dog voting too. Make sure you put that in.
Doug said, yes, sorry.
It's so funny, cause it's just right, the timing, the timing is impeccable.
It was, well, I, he, he works for me.
Okay, uh, new business, five point one. Special permit approval for use of, uh, two thirteen Nashua Street. We have discussion on this. Uh, we would have one condition. Would be the acceptance of, uh, the Conservation Commission. And of course we, the standard.
Department head comments, all department head comments.
But specifically conservation on this.
Well, yeah, well, that's part of it and, and conservation's approval. Yeah.
Any, any other discussion?
Nope. So.
I need a motion.
I just said, motion, so moved.
Second.
Motion so moved by Sal.
Motion to approve based on department head, uh, conditions, Conservation Commission approval.
Thank you, Sal.
You're welcome. Sorry, John.
Roll call.
John Siza.
Second.
I'll second again. This is Paul.
Carol Vittoriasso.
Yes.
Saatchikunin.
Yes.
Tom Kerrigan, excuse, Paul Weiser.
Yes.
Patrick Perla.
Yes.
Fred Fredericks.
Yes.
Yeah, motion carries. Communications, site plan modification of Research Drive Lot 9A Continental Stone. Plan board to make ma- minor, um, major, um, major or minor determination. They're cutting quite a bit off this building, aren't they?
Yes.
Here's the narrative.
It's half of it.
If you get the plan. Is Mr. Hannigan on?
I didn't see him.
Okay.
I didn't see a representative.
And we should table it until the such time that there is a representative to speak to the plan.
Gonna make that a motion, Paul?
Yes.
There you go, second.
I have a motion made and seconded made by Paul, seconded by Sal, uh, to continue this. Do we want to continue this to our, uh?
August 24th?
August 24th.
Oh, no, let's, let's just move, I mean, I don't want to. Well, that's my, that's just my opinion.
No, let's move that till September.
I, I agree, I agree. I don't want two heavy meetings in a row, to be honest with you.
Okay, September 21 at, uh, six thirty-five.
As Tony Angelina used to say, heavy agenda.
Heavy, heavy, heavy.
Nine twenty-one at six thirty-five?
Yep.
Actually.
It's a minor, it, we don't know if it's a minor or a major.
No, cause we don't have, I mean, I have the plans in front of me, but I, I, you know, he's gonna have to explain what he's doing. So you can look at it and say, yeah, I know that, that and that, but I wanna see what he says.
They'll leave it in communications for next September 21st.
Well, no, we should schedule it.
Oh, let's schedule Fred, right?
Alright.
That way there, it's all official.
Okay. I have a motion made and seconded to schedule.
Roll call.
What time we're doing it?
Six thirty-five, nine twenty-one.
Alright.
Six thirty-five, okay. Uh, roll call.
John Siza. John Siza. John Siza.
Yay.
Carol Vittoriasso.
Yes.
Saatchikunin.
Yes.
Tom Kerrigan, excuse, Paul Weiser.
Yes.
Patrick Perla.
Yes.
Fred Fredericks.
Yes.
Um, this is Stephanie, just to confirm, we're not tabling it. We're scheduling it nine twenty-one as an open public meeting at six thirty-five.
Correct.
Great, thank you.
Thanks, Steph.
Six point two. Discussion possible revision, revisions zoning on this planning board discussion is requested by Mayor Dean Mazzarella. Communication dated seven fifteen twenty.
Oh.
Alright.
I keep on losing.
Are you, can you hear me?
Yeah, I'm back on.
Okay, there's a letter I put in your packet, um, dated July 15th. But, um, basically going over the conversation that the mayor had with staff. Um, and he wanted to request that the planning board consider, um, several amendments to the zoning ordinance. Um, I don't know if you want me to briefly go through each one or if you've already read it and you'd rather not do that.
No, we should discuss them.
Okay, the first the first amendment, the mayor requests the board to consider is in regards to at-home business regulations in Residence A District zoning only. Um, because I, I believe what's happened is some at-home businesses have squeaked by and, and taken root in the Residence A District. And we've had neighbors complaining that the types of uses that have gone in aren't really characteristic of Residence A District. So, um, the mayor wants, uh, the planning board to consider firming it up to state that, um, it's strictly residential in nature, business that are, businesses that appear to be residential, residential in nature. Um, basically no visible impacts of the business, no impacts to the neighborhood outside of residential use. So no signage, no outside employees, no living in, not living in the home, no visitors to the site, no noise, no odor, et cetera. So right now it, it does state that you can't do it, but based on the lost interpretation of it, um, we have gotten businesses like a hair salon or, and, and he wants to make sure that doesn't happen in Residence A because that should be, when you buy a home in Residence A, you should be guaranteed that it's gonna be a residential in nature district.
I agree.
Right, so Elizabeth, I don't quite understand it. So is it in the ordinance now that those are precluded in Residence A?
Um.
Certain businesses?
No. Not, well, it stated loosely. Um, if you look at what I, I, I put draft language in your packet and I'll pull that up right now.
I thought your language was good.
Just to kind of crisp it up a little bit.
Sorry, how about the table of uses? You know, for Residence A, I mean.
It has home occupied use, but what is a home occupied use?
Okay.
I think the definition of home occupied use needs to be tightened up.
Oh, well, okay, that's my question, cause we do have a definition for it, but.
Right.
So you can see that I pulled it up there, the existing definition and then what I'm proposing and.
Uh, I think we have a tough one with no noise. There is a noise ordinance in the city. You know the same.
But it says no noise not characteristic of residential use. Not no noise at all.
This includes no signage, no visitors to the site. But, for example, I mean, I know like for a law offices can be, can be sit, considered a home occupation. How do we, how do, how do they have no visitors at the site for that? I'm just using them as an example.
You can't do that.
I, I think we need to, we need to think about this definition.
Yeah.
Um, I think we should have.
Things in here, but then there's some things in.
I, frankly, I, 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 I agree with Sal. If they're, if, if home occupations are not allowed in Residence A.
No, they are allowed in Residence A.
Then, well, then, and people are complaining, then I'm sorry, I guess.
But, but Carol, if somebody's got a huge sign out, a big sign out, right? A neon sign flash and then that's the sign ordinance, right? The sign is, uh, you know, I, I don't know, that, you know, is except, uh, people.
Personally, I think this is, should take a, uh, separate meeting.
Yeah, I do too.
Okay.
I, I agree.
With the committee to look at.
You're cutting out, John.
Because there's so many home consulting businesses now, so you gotta, you gotta be real careful. I mean, uh, you can say, I live in Residence A and I'm a, I'm a computer consultant, you know? Somebody might come to see me to, uh, you know, give me a job or go over some stuff. I might have someone that needs to look at, uh, stuff I'm working on. I mean, we really gotta think about this one and talk about it and get something really good that, that works.
I have a gentleman that lives across the street from me and he runs a, uh, a small business. He's got one woman that does work for him. Um, he doesn't, because I know he doesn't get any visitors. I don't see any traffic over there anyway. But he runs, he sells conveyors and, you know, stuff off of the internet.
See, that's where you get problematic though. You get problematic if you're having employees in a Residence A, uh, occupied business. That could be a real problem. Cause then, you know, you gotta have pot, you know? See, I'm saying, you know, there's so many consulting, uh, businesses now that, I mean, you don't have employees, you are the employee, it's you. Carol, lawyer, home, home law office, but not having employees, I think you got a problem.
And, and how do you have no deliveries? You can't tell me that, you know how many times the Amazon truck comes to my house a week?
That's right.
And I'm, and I don't have a business here.
And that's not, that's just what it is.
So Frank, you know, you want my opinion? I don't think we should change anything. And it says, it says carried on by the inhabitants of the dwelling and does not alter the residential character of the property. I think if, if a neighbor's having an issue, I think the neighbor should bring it to the lawn, the, the building inspector. And, and that's it. I don't, I mean, I don't think we can limit it. How could we have no, and you did a good job, Elizabeth. I get it, cause the mayor came to you and you had to kind of, but I don't know how you can have no visitors to the site and no, and no deliveries when I, frankly, every residential home has deliveries daily, whether they have a business in there or not. I, I think that whoever's complaining should complain. I mean, Frank, you know, you want, they're complaining to the mayor, then I think there should be some, in, in, rather than changing the ordinance, amending the ordinance, there should be some sort of enforcement in place. Because. Because I, I think, I think just the fact that it says does not alter the residential character of the property, and a neighbor thinks it is altering the residential character of the property. Then I think that the, that the enforcement authority comes into play, not that, that we changed the, so, so what if we change it?
Could be a licensing issue too.
Yeah, how is it still enforced?
I don't see this, no noise, no odor, no deliveries. It's not enforceable.
John's house is already out, it's a whole business, no odor. Now John doesn't have a place.
Yeah.
Sorry, I'm sorry.
So, that, I mean.
I worked on my house for fifteen years.
My suggestion is, maybe we invite the mayor to the next meeting and, and find out exactly what the issue, what the issue is. I mean, is, this, this is a city of like forty-five thousand people, how, like, who's, who's complaining about what's happening? And maybe we can resolve that without, and, and again, like I said, we can change the ordinance, but is it going to be enforced? I think the way the ordinance is written now is fine if it's out of character for that residence, that residential area.
It's broad enough that you can, you can bring it to enforcement if you just think something isn't right, you know? So maybe it needs to stay broad like Carol's.
Yeah, I tend to agree.
Okay, Dan.
And I'm happy to talk to the mayor about it, I don't need to.
I think, I think like, uh, Carol's, uh, suggestion to have the mayor or representative of the mayor. Well, he's not got it, if he doesn't come, you know, he, his representative can come and fill us in.
Well, I mean, who's gonna come representative to fill us in? Have the mayor come to tell us, you know, what his thoughts are, and we can all work toward a resolution together. But I think, I think Carol's right, I think leaving it.
Yeah.
It is, gives us more latitude to control things versus limiting what needs to be controlled. I was like, that was pretty good.
Right, and it comes down to enforcement, not, not, so, how, you know? So how we go into, like, that's the thing, who's, who's the, who's the enforcement officer? And, and what's the remedy?
It's the building inspector.
Right. But, but then again, you know, that's, you know, you're just gonna be set up that that's what the building inspector's supposed to do. If people, if, if Dean didn't pass, or the mayor didn't pass that information on to the building inspector to take a look at it, you know, changing the, uh, the ordinance before you even know what's going on is kind of like, uh, flying with your eyes closed, you know? So, I thought.
I don't think, I see it, like I said, the sign ordinance is, is in place, uh, we have a noise ordinance, we have a, the Board of Health on odor. Okay, we can't do anything about deliveries because, let's face it, everything is deliveries these days. So I, I can't, I just don't see it. So, uh, I think in this one, uh, Carol's, uh.
It's all well intended.
One of the motions, right, the matter on, that discuss this one.
It, because, and then the other thing I'd like to know is when did the complaints start? Did they start after March seventeenth, when people were being creative and started working at home and trying to make a living because they can't go to the office? That's, that's another point.
It is, and Carol, like you said, city of forty thousand people, this is the first, these are the first complaints we, I've ever heard in thirty-two years on this board. So, that's interesting.
Let me tell you something, now, now that I work for the district court, I can't even tell you how many restraining orders and harassment orders we hear between neighbors because everyone's home.
Yep.
Everyone's home now, and no one can stand each other because that's, because they're at home. So I'm just curious if that's part, if that's part of this issue is, is, as well.
Interesting.
Okay, six point two.
Um, no, there are a couple other suggestions.
Well, we're gonna wait on one and invite the mayor to talk to us.
You want to do them all?
We should probably hold all of them.
I agree.
Is there anything that, what?
Well, let's look at it. Um, the next one is, is a, it's a, on, on the overlay district. Uh, this one would probably work, I think, this would, we would have to, uh, we would have to have a hearing on this. And then have a, come up with a petition, and then, uh, petition the city council. Would be the process on this one.
Come just one twenty-seven, Maryam Ave. Is, is it at the end, is it?
Just one point.
Zoning, is it, you know, you know, four houses away from the zone?
It's across the street.
Across the street?
Adjacent, yeah.
So it's across the street from the zoning, but everything else around it is still gonna be, uh, outside of that district, right? So you would just be creating it for one house across the street, not a whole area.
Well, that would be part of the hearing, we'd have to look at that.
Yeah, that, I mean, to me, that doesn't make sense, because that's like spot zoning, you know? I thought, you know, how do you do one house because it's across the street in a cluster of other homes that don't comply? Then you just let everybody else do it.
My understanding on this one, and I don't have the zoning map in front of me. Um, we would have to look, it says it's adjacent, and there was a lot of discussion on the Maryam Avenue originally.
Right.
On, on how, just how far up we would go. Um, so if this is one more possibly, uh, just across the street and it's adjacent, if is it adjacent and it's touching the original, uh, uh, original urban corridor, then it's just a little extension and I don't see a big deal. Or maybe we want to look at it and say, rather than just doing this one, do we want to extend it further?
Well, if you, John, it, the point here is, if it's across the street, you know, yeah, technically, right? But if, like I said, the ten houses before you get to that number, uh, aren't allowed to do it, and you spot zone that one, and then the houses after it, I don't.
I don't know that, so.
I know, that's what I'm saying, we need to know.
We should wait until the mayor comes in to ask him why this one property is the one.
Okay, oh, you got the zoning map there?
Let's take a look where it is, and let's see what doesn't comply, because you don't want to spot zone something like this.
No.
Then you open, then you might as well zone the whole area.
Why don't we schedule this?
What do we got there?
For one office, for one law office. God forbid they couldn't find another office closer in.
Okay.
It's the zoning for it, right, that's kind of, just gets, you know.
The hash is the zoning, right?
It's the overlay.
The overlay.
Tell us what we're looking at, Elizabeth.
Hold on, my computer's not cooperating.
No, no, this is gonna be great.
That's Grove.
I'm loading the, um, the overlay is loaded.
She's loading all the, all the apps, going, she's, she's gonna spell it out for us.
It's Maryam, M-E-R-R.
I A M.
Okay.
Twenty-seven.
Okay, so here it is, in the.
That's it right there.
The residential B.
And it's across the street, now go down.
Have you hit the overlay for that?
An overlay for U C O is the striped area here.
So the one next to it is not part of the district, but this one is, I agree with Sally.
Yeah, see, yeah, you know, so, creating one in the middle of a whole pile of trouble for everybody.
I think we, but if, if this, this is considered a zone change, don't we have to schedule for a hearing?
Yeah.
Even if we're making a determination.
But that's just my point right there, see, you, you got it, that's my point. Now, if it was, uh, the house across the street, you know, across, where is that, that's, uh?
Then there's no standalone house across the street, you're all in a row, on, on every corner around it.
Yeah.
So how do you justify one and not all the others in the same row?
So that's it, then, if, if I was to extend, do this, I would have extended it up to, uh.
Extend the whole thing, the whole block.
Person interested might want to ask his neighbors if they're interested.
Yeah, I would do the whole thing all the way up to Archet Street. If we wanted to do overlay, we would right up to Archet Street.
Can I again recommend that we?
Yeah, you know, you, I mean, we're getting involved here, for one law office, come on, guys, let's be smarter than this.
If we're gonna invite the mayor to speak.
Then you go, you put it up there, they're gonna have the same argument up and down every side street there is. So, no matter where you put this, you're gonna have, you know, you're gonna have somebody that's gonna say, hey, they did it, I can do it, here's why. And, and you already set a precedent, and before you know it, it's gonna go all the way up. So maybe that's the reason we zoned it that way, or we, you know, when it was zoned and the new zoning ordinance came out, maybe that's part of the reason.
I, I don't know, I feel, I'm in conflict though, because in the last, the last matter on the agenda, we were restricting home occupations, and now we're expanding it. So I'm in conflict, but we do have to schedule it for a hearing.
Yeah.
That would have to be scheduled for a hearing.
I agree.
September twenty-first.
Who's the applicant for the hearing?
Well, no, it would be us, we'd have to submit this, right?
It would be.
The planning board for the change.
If a request from the mayor, we take the action, we can decide to take whatever action we want.
It's a request from the mayor on behalf of somebody who's unidentified, and we don't know anything about the.
Well, that's true, don't you need like ten interested voters or something on, on it, because it's a zone change, isn't it?
It is.
No, 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 the process is, the planning board.
Well, we can submit.
The planning board can have a meeting and submit a petition, okay?
And I hope that's water dripping.
The city council.
I am, I'm washing my hands for the eightieth time today. Yeah, it's why, it is why, I get what you're saying, Sal, it's water, yes.
Funny.
Uh, well, John, but if we're submitting it, aren't we, aren't we then kind of like, as the petitioner? In, in force, like, in, sound like we're in favor of it?
Yes.
Definitely, we have to have our own meeting, we have to decide whether we want to do it or not. So we have to have a separate meeting, and it has to be scheduled to discuss this.
Well, only if we want to go forward and discuss it.
If we decide against it, then we decide against it and nothing happens.
Yeah, only if we want to go for, look, I.
I don't know.
Commotion right now that we.
So, John, are you saying we have to schedule a meeting in order to discuss it?
We're discussing it.
We're discussing it now.
Yeah.
And there seems consensus now, why are we gonna schedule another meeting to repeat what we just did?
Well, I think the discussion would be, I, I tend to agree with Sal, and the, and that's tough. But I take, and when we pick out one house or one lot like that, that, normally that would be considered spot zoning. Now, do we, the whole idea of the overlay was to take those large homes that are on Maryam Avenue, and that they would become businesses or, you know, law offices, doctors' offices, you know, dentists, whatever. And we thought that at the time, that was a good, that was a stopping point. There was also a lot of, there was quite a bit of discussion going all the way to Archet Street. And that would be the problem, so I think our discussion is, not that we do this one property, but I think our discussion is, that do we want to, oh, extend the overlay district to Archet Street? Okay?
So.
And then that would encompass this, and it would not be, uh, it would not be spot zoning, other than that, it's not zoning.
So, John, John, I, I understand what you're saying, and what you're saying is a substantive, is a substantive procedure. I'm thinking of this, well, a substantive manner, I'm considering this procedurally. So, we have on, under communications, the mayor's request that we extend the overlay to include this one particular house. In my opinion, and this is just my opinion, the board can decide, is that I think we go back to the mayor to say that this should be, this should be, if I'm even right about this, and I, I think I am, because every time we've had a request for a zone change or a request to extend zoning, which I think this is what it is, that I think it has to be done in the, in the appropriate manner that, that, so that it can be presented to us. I, I don't, and I don't know if just the mayor asking us to do it is enough, because my understanding is anytime we wanted a zone change, it had to be held, it, we needed to schedule a public meeting, but I also thought that came in form of a petition, not just a request.
You're right, you're right, Cal, it comes in the ten registered votes, so, and submit it.
The mayor, mayor, doesn't get in ten registered voters, the mayor has come to the planning board. The planning board has the authority to take, schedule a meeting, and come up with a recommended change. I would recommend, we would then create a petition and submit that petition to the city council. The city council would then have a public day. They would refer it back to us, and we would have to have a public hearing at that time.
Well, I, I, I mean, I, we can, we can do it that way, but I have no, I mean, nothing, there's, there's no evidence before me to say that this is in, that this is in, it's, you know, what the standard is, that it's in keeping with the neighborhood.
That's right.
And I don't, you know, so I, I'm thinking we should go back to the mayor and say that it, if, I mean, if, if the mayor himself can bring the petition, I don't know, I don't know off the top of my head. Then it should be, it should be brought in that form, but I don't think, I have enough information as a member of the planning board to all of a sudden want to change the zoning because.
I agree with Carol, what you're talking about doing is creating hours of meeting over something that isn't, that there's no impetus for at this point.
And we don't, you know, and maybe isn't, his intent from, from the, what he's asking us to do is one house, not add to the corridor.
That's right, but.
But, but.
I agree with.
Well, I understood, but there was a reason we did the corridor where we did. And Foster Court, all those other homes in Foster Court, so that house is on the corner, it's part of Foster Court, part of Maryam Ave. All those other homes on Foster, Foster Court are all residential homes. So, you know, I don't know, it's right, but I kind of, you know, I kind of want more information on this before I even think about putting a petition together to go.
Oh, we get, oh, no, 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 all I said was, we have a, we have to, we would schedule a meeting on it. A set, another meeting, tonight we're just deciding whether we want to have a meeting.
And I will endorse Carol's suggestion of let's talk to the mayor, get more information before we schedule a meeting.
I agree.
That one lot.
More information, and then we can see if we want to move it forward or not.
When Dean, when Dean comes, this is Fred, when Dean comes to talk about six point two one, all these.
There you go, Fred.
But then we can do whatever we have to do after that.
I agree.
More info.
Okay, done.
Let's just request them to come to the meeting.
You, and I'm, I'm also reading the, I'm also reading the agenda, and it, and it's worried that it's for us to consider, which we're doing. So I guess the next step is to invite the mayor or his representative to come in and discuss these.
Right.
Yeah.
That works. All right, can we go on to the next one on commercial kitchens?
This one here, that one is, this could be, uh, just to have any place that has a kitchen, to have a, I gotta look at the, I think the Board of Health had to get involved with this, and there's a bunch of other issues that I think would open up, uh, could really open up a bag of worms.
Why, why, why all of a sudden are we doing commercial kitchens for places where restaurants are already permitted? Why are we even involved in this?
I don't know.
I, I, let's just throw it out.
I, I don't even understand what it means.
I don't either.
A commercial kitchen generally is like a shared space where a bunch of businesses come in and use one kitchen. Um, but you're not gonna do that in COVID, so.
Look, you know, what is, you know, Paul, sort of like, uh, I own a restaurant that makes spaghetti and meatballs, somebody.
It's not really a restaurant, but say you do catering.
Leaves my kitchen, right?
No, it's like, say you do, it'd be, it'd be a separate place, you know, there's lots of shared office spaces that they have.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Guitar companies, and it's, it's like that, you know, say you do catering on the weekends, and you don't want to buy your own buildings, so you'd go in these two days a week, and I do something else on Wednesdays, and I, you know, go in and do.
Commercial.
I don't even know.
A lot of restaurants do catering. Okay?
Yeah, but we don't even.
Everything that comes out today, if you, if they don't serve it in their place, it should be considered catering.
Can I make a suggestion? Why don't we have the mayor come in on this one and explain what he has to say?
Nice, Fred, there you go, let's do it, move on to number four.
That's right.
Really don't know what he's talking about.
And he, and we don't know what he means by commercial kitchen.
Right.
Yeah. We need more information, this one I really need more information. We need more information. This one I really need more information on.
Man.
Okay. I think all three of these require a, a meeting, request the mayor to come to the meeting and, and.
Talk about it.
You also have 6.24 is.
That one I didn't get a lot of direction on. It was pretty vague. He just wants us to clarify the purpose statements in the different zoning districts.
What does he mean by that?
Well, we'll ask him when he comes in.
We'll ask him when he comes. He's got a lot of things he gotta ask, we have to ask him. So just invite him for a little swire, ready, good to go. Okay.
I mean, the purpose of, the purpose to the statements is to, to define a zoning district, to give us some clarity in what you can do there. Rather than just making it open. I mean, I don't know.
I, I hate to suggest this, because I'm contradicting myself, but.
Uh-oh.
Can, if, do we want to invite him to come in on the 24th? I mean.
No.
Yeah.
Too much stuff.
Well, all we have so far is that other, you think that's too much for him to bang out these four, five?
The 24th.
I guess we could.
24th would actually do it.
If you really want to do a long meet, if you really want to do a meeting, a regular meeting, I thought we were just gonna do.
Do you think that's gonna be long? Do you think it's gonna be long for him to, to discuss these four matters?
No, it'll probably be an hour with all of our discussion. I mean, if he can make the 24th.
I don't know. I, we don't, we don't have to vote on it. I mean, Elizabeth can ask him.
Should I ask his preference?
Yeah, sure.
8:24 or 9:21?
Uh, let's not even, yeah, why don't we just say, look, can you give us better clarification and see what he sends you, or the information he provides you, and then we'll schedule it once we have that information. Does that sound like my work?
We need some clarity on this.
So if he can give us.
There are other reservations required, so. Yeah, I think if he could show up, it could be really quick.
I think you're better off having him pop.
No, I think you're right. I think you're right. I agree. I agree.
Because he wanted me to put everything in the memo form, as he said, off his break meeting, and I didn't have any room to lengthen that meeting and ask for more clarification, but if it's the board asking.
Yeah. That's okay, Elizabeth. That's good. Works. It's just, what do you want to do? Do you want to do it the 20? I don't see this as a pressing thing. Um, so it depends. Schedule it on the 24th, that's all.
Yeah. We'll schedule on the 24th, and then it shouldn't be too bad.
And see, if you make it, he can. If not, we'll, we'll do it on the 21st, right?
Okay.
Okay. 6.3. Discussion Amendment to the subdivision regulation retained in section 14, Performance Guarantees, Section H, Release of Performance Guarantees.
All right. I reached out to Mass, let's serve on this, to get examples from what other towns are doing, and I got one really, really, really good example. And it's in the packet. And then I had some draft language I put together. But it, it's, it's very rough format.
Elizabeth, I'm looking at that now. So, section H and I, you know, you have parentheses around them. Are those to be, uh, deleted?
Oh, those are recommended, Sal.
Oh, those are the, the, those are the recommended ones, H and I?
Are you looking at the May 4th, 2020 draft?
I am, yes, correct. Yep.
I, I don't know what you mean by parentheses.
Oh, I, I have just, I have like parenthesis. Maybe it's just came out on my copy.
No, 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 no. You got it. That, that's, that's, uh, that's Rockland.
It's what?
Oh, that's another town.
Oh, okay. Okay, thank you. Thank you.
And that, that's what they got in there.
Okay.
Okay?
Yep.
So, so this whole thing is, Sal, we're just trying, we're trying to lock down our.
John, we can't hear you.
Uh, bonding and how we release bonds and how we release covenants and, and how we make sure that people get. You can't hear me?
Uh, you, you're going in and out. What do you got, AO?
No. Yeah, I'm on, it says I got quarantined again. I'm not at home. I'm down the cave.
Oh, okay. You're okay now. Now it's working.
Okay. Um, this is to, uh, we've had a lot of problems with getting companies to finalize their paperwork.
Yep, yep.
You know, getting all the, the bonds, getting all the, uh, getting all the, um, easements, uh, the asbils. And we just want to make sure that, that the, our current zoning is kind of sketchy on that in defining, uh, what we want. So, it was, it was more geared toward, I'm gonna say the hardware, or the, the building of the roads and so, where we find the road.
We lost you, John. John's frozen.
John, you're frozen.
So what's the next steps on this? Do we want to?
John, John really was taking the lead on this.
Yep.
So I think we really need to hear from him.
We lost him.
Yeah.
We just lost him. He lost them all together.
How about we put it in college try, so we'll have to give him credit for that.
There you go. There you go, Pat. We're gonna, we're gonna let him into the frat.
Hello.
Hi, we can hear you now.
I'm back.
He's coming back. There he is.
Fuck luck.
There he is, the movie star. Look at him.
Go quickly while you're still there.
No, I'm just saying, we've had a lot of issues with getting the final documentation, uh, the, uh, before we release bonds. So we want to make it very clear that,
Yep.
that not only you have to get the rope done, but you have to get the deeds corrected and all easements taken care of. And the asbill drawings have to be complete.
I thought we had.
What we have is suggestions.
I thought we had a pretty good process. I'm all for updating a process to make it good. Um, but I thought, I, I, you know, our, our process was that bad? Was that loose?
Um, everything that we have in black.
One more time.
Yep. I thought our process was pretty good. I thought, you know, we, we had tightened that up a while ago. I'm just curious. Is, is, are things going badly?
No, just, yeah, it is.
These are new forms, right, that, that you've, uh, developed?
No, those are, another town developed those.
Is, is offering. Do we have, uh, forms that we currently use that are, that are kind of like this?
Uh-uh. We were thinking we could, we might benefit by.
I think we could too. I think we would too. But, um, still, we don't have forms.
This is Stephanie.
I'd like to have a working session with you.
Okay, let's do that when you're back.
I'll be back next.
I think Stephanie wanted to say something.
Okay. Um, I, I believe there are forms, but the forms from this town are much more detailed. And I think that's what they were trying to update, correct, John?
You might not hear Stephanie. That's good.
Okay, okay.
So these are, uh, we do, we look at what ours look like, EMEs, and, and see where we shoot ourselves.
Yeah, want to clean it up.
Yep.
Sounds good.
Sounds good.
All right, so John and I will have a committee on this again.
Yeah, I think it's great.
Okay.
It helps us.
6.4.
Okay. Avaway, bond release.
All right, I checked with the treasurer today. And we have about $10,829 um, in the account, um, for Southern End Realty LLC, which is Avaway. Um, there's a little bit of extra interest on there, but it's, it's miniscule. And then I checked with DPW. And we have now two quotes. We've got another one. We had one from Hannigan Engineering previously that came in right under $10,000. And then we have another one that came in from, um, Whitman and Bingham for $7,800. But then, um, I'm also, I, I need the board. I went through the records, tried to find any record of the board um, voting to release the bond, and I didn't find anything. I checked with the clerk. I checked our records. Um, so we need a vote to be taken by the board to either release the bond funds or to delegate authority to the planning director to release the funds. Either one.
I think, I think that, that, I don't, we're not releasing the bond. We're exercising the bond.
Exercise. I used the wrong language. You're right.
Yeah. Well, in other words, what we're doing is we're exercising the bond. We're taking it, and then we're going to get the work done.
Yep. Much as the bond, John.
And.
10,080.
Okay, thanks, Elizabeth.
Yeah, we have quotes.
Yep.
The quotes are under what we have.
Yep.
So the motion would be to exercise the bond and allow Elizabeth to proceed uh, with the DPW in getting the work done.
So moved.
Okay. Any further discussion on that?
No.
Okay. Uh, I have a motion made and seconded. Uh, do I have a roll call?
John Souza.
Yes.
Carol Vittorioso.
Yes.
Sacha Cunnin.
Yes.
Tom Cargan. Excuse, Paul Weiser.
Yes.
Patrick Curla.
Yes.
Fred Frederick.
Yes.
Okay. Request for the planning, 6.5, request for the planning board recommendation for nomination for a representative to the Montezuma Joint Transportation Committee.
Yeah. And I, uh, we had, uh, Mr. Peter Laches serving.
Yeah.
And he says he's still willing to serve. But, um, the nomination period came back up again, because I think it's annually.
So let's nominate him. Motion to re-nominate Peter.
But we have to put him back on the agenda twice.
It's okay.
Put him on the agenda.
Okay.
That's good. He's still interested, right, Elizabeth?
I have a motion on that.
I saw him briefly in the, um, in City Hall, and he says he's, he's interested.
Okay.
Right.
I just made.
Elizabeth, has he been going to the meetings?
Yes.
Did we get a report from him?
Um, no, he, he didn't give me a report, but.
So can't you get one?
Yes.
Request that he give us something happening. Good to have him there, but you know, we'd like to have some input back, if possible.
Yeah, would be, that's part of the, isn't that part of what they're supposed to do? So.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's been weird with COVID.
Sometimes you have to define things.
Okay, but tell him to limit his remarks to seven minutes, please.
There you go. Thanks, Carol.
Seven minutes.
Seven minutes.
A brief report, just an overview.
Okay.
And that's a long time, if you think about.
That's a long time.
It is a long time.
Man, no more than slides for the presentation.
Okay, 6.6 again, is a request for the planning board, uh, recommendations for, this is for residential solar. And that's something we've got to do.
I need at least one member. I have a, a citizen representative. I need at least one board member who's going, willing to serve, so.
Do I have a board member that'd like to serve? Don't everybody step up at once?
Hey, I've served too many times, too many things. I'm on my way out, so I am, I can't do it.
I, I can volunteer, because we're, our house is on the market, so I don't know how long I'll be here.
Aw, Fred.
Freddy.
Yep.
Oh, man.
Patrick.
Melissa.
I mean, you guys are killing me. I got, I got three kids, like, at the age of nine, and I'm starting to get a job.
So you should be doing it. That's the only, that's the reason why. You should be doing it just to get the hell out of the house.
Oh, my gosh. I know, I have been trapped here. Very tempting, let me tell you.
I'm flexible. We can meet over the phone. We can meet Zoom. We can meet anytime. When you get your job figured out.
Yeah, all right. I'll do it.
Okay, good, good, Pat.
Nice job, Pat. Attaboy. Way to take one from the team.
Guys are getting close to having nap times in the afternoon, so I'll take.
There you go.
Oh, under communications.
Excuse me.
We're supposed to cover, uh, um, the meeting. Hello?
Hello?
Can I lose you again?
No, you got us back. We're back, John.
Okay.
Yeah.
And I have, uh, under communications. When were we supposed to bring up, uh?
Yes, seven site plan for 17 Gordon Street.
Right.
Scheduling.
I, I didn't understand what you said.
We're supposed to schedule a site plan for 17 Gordon Street.
Okay, right, right, right. We did.
It's gonna be on, um.
Eight 11 at 5 o'clock Tuesday. Right?
Eight 24. No, no. That's the site.
Oh.
That's the site one.
Yeah, you're right. Yep.
Make a motion and set it for August 24th at 6:30.
We have one at 6:30. Has to be 6:35. 31.
6:31 then, for August.
Okay.
How did we have one at?
The special permit.
Okay.
The permit. It's a site plan.
Okay. 6:31 then.
Okay. I have a motion made and seconded. Uh, roll call.
Who's seconded, please? Who's seconded?
Pat.
How many guys seconded?
Pat, you there?
I was on mute. I did, sorry.
Oh, you did, okay. Motion made, made, oh, roll call.
John Souza.
Yes.
Carol Vittorioso.
Yes.
Fred Frederick.
Yes.
Sacha Cunnin.
Here. I mean, yes, here.
Paul Weiser.
Yes.
Patrick Curla.
Can you hear me?
Pat behind you?
Yep.
Yeah.
Yes.
I'm Cargan.
Hi, Pat. Hi, Pat.
Val.
Okay, directors' report.
All right, I have good news. Um, we are this close, if you can see my motion. We're like a millimeter away from issuing the, um, new zoning amendment book. Um, I got it back from, with all the amendments from the MRPC folks, and there were only two minor things. Well, there were a couple of little things I edited, but, um, only two little minor things that I need them to go back and edit. Um, and then we'll have it ready, um, and including amendments for any other future zoning, um, amendments that are made. We can make them very quickly. And then we'll have the books printed, and, uh, we'll have them available digitally as well.
That's great work, Elizabeth. Nice.
Very good.
Finally.
Yes, yep.
Finally.
Yep.
Good.
Okay. Executive session, no?
Vote.
Anything else? Sal, your motion.
I just said, motion to adjourn.
Elizabeth, Elizabeth. Oh, yes, Stephanie, what did we forget?
Um, I don't know. Did you want to mention that Brooks Pond?
Yeah, there was a, um, uh, at the last meeting, we had a, an item for, um, Brooks Pond that was considered for minor modification, but the board never took a vote to approve it as, to approve it. They only took a motion to consider it as a minor modification.
Okay.
We should fix that.
When we looked through the minutes, Stephanie looked through the minutes, and I went and looked through the minutes, and, and it's correct. She's, um.
But we should fix that. What, what do you need the motion to say?
We need the motion to approve minor modification.
At Brooks Pond.
And the motion, I believe, was made by Carol.
Really? We made that mistake? That's just so unlike us.
It was weird. It was, you know, it was a bad meeting with all the, it kept cutting out and, and I was ill. I was not feeling well at all. So I was not on my game.
Okay, somebody. Can we, I guess my, my concern is, well, is there any appeal period for this? Can we make it like nuk pro tunk, back to the original meeting?
Wow.
We should be able to if we have the motion, but just failed to vote.
Not that great.
There, there's no appeal, I don't think. It's a, it's a.
Minor modification because it's not a hearing? Okay.
Yeah.
Well, I, I make them, having found, having voted unanimously that, um, it was a minor modification on Brooks Ponds, um, I make a motion to approve the minor modification.
Thank you.
I have a motion made.
Second her.
You got a second on that?
That's me.
Sal just.
Just as far as discussion on that, I've asked Elizabeth to get a drawing and find out what the actual count is.
Yeah, I looked into that. Um, and I haven't, I looked into that. I reached out to the conservation agent because she said there was an environmental report. And, um, I don't think she was, yeah, she didn't get back to me yet. She said she, she had.
The number I have, the number I have is three, four, two. So I wanted to see what they currently have, what they're building and where we stand against that number. Cause that is a fixed number.
Yeah.
It's not, it is not residential C and you can stuff as much as you can into it. It, there's an environmental impact statement on it and there's a set number of three forty-two.
Yeah.
I want to match that number up.
Yep. I, I called Angela and I emailed her and, um, I couldn't get through, but I expected her back from her.
Okay. We can square that away, but that's all right. We'll give them the minor modification for now, but we'll have, I want to, I want to see a definition on those numbers.
Yep.
Okay.
Do we want to take a roll call, so?
Roll call on, on the adjournment.
Yes.
Uh, roll call on the motion. All in favor?
My adjournment.
Roll call on the.
John Souza.
Yay.
Carol Vittorioso.
Yes.
Paul Weiser.
Yes.
Sasha Cunnin.
Yes.
Fred Frederick.
Yes.
Patrick Carla.
Yes.
Tom Cargan, excuse.
What, you got a voice modifier on you?
Now you can do adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
I think he has that, Mr. Microphone. That's what he's.
I know it. He's, no, he's got a software app on his phone. Motion to adjourn.
You're looking good.
Second the motion.
I know it. I grew.
Got to roll call it.
Go ahead.
John Souza.
Yay.
Carol Vittorioso.
Yes.
Paul Weiser.
Yes.
Sasha Cunnin.
Yes.
Fred Frederick.
Yes.
Patrick Carla.
Yes.
Tom Cargan, excuse.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Thank you, everybody.
A nice, great meeting. Thanks, Elizabeth. Great job.
Thanks, Elizabeth.
Thank you, guys.